All right, so we'll get the meeting started here at seven o'clock. And need a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, completely so.
Okay. Approval of the minutes for March 1st, did everybody get a copy of?
No, I did not.
Approval of the minutes is printed.
Would you tell Kelly that we didn't get it in time to get her a copy?
I heard, thank you.
I'll email you a copy.
Thank you.
Okay. Approval of the minutes? We got that already?
We need a motion. We need a motion.
I have a motion, the minutes is printed.
Okay. Okay, on favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Can we roll call votes? Kelly isn't here.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you for reminding me, Larry. Okay. Let's see, approval of the minutes, Kelly Wilson?
Yes.
Carol Sanford? They're named?
Yes.
Dick Lewis?
Yes.
Robert Eck?
Yes.
Jennifer Patel, yes, eyes all, thank you.
Okay, we've got the public hearing at 7:15 and we've got CIB here. Would you have a letter from CIB that I emailed to you? And if you don't have it, I've got a copy for you here. But Carmen is here to assist us with any questions. And we also have Justin English, is Justin English on there?
He is.
Okay, we have him also available to help us on Zoom, so. So Carmen, it's up to you.
Okay, may I go up here, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll try to speak loudly with the mask on.
Glad we take the mask off, move far enough away.
All right, well, good evening. This is the first live planning commission meeting I've done in a year. So it actually feels pretty good. You should have a letter dated April 1st, and this is a Thomas rezoning request. And this property, this parcel is located at 644 North Madison Street. And it's a corner parcel, as I'm sure you're familiar with, at the southwest corner with West Britton Road. Now, in your zoning ordinance, you do have criteria listed for consideration of rezoning requests like this. There are three of them. And the first one is whether or not to propose rezoning is consistent with the goals, policies, and future land use map of the City of Perry master plan, or if conditions have changed significantly since then that would cause you to look at it differently. The master plan calls for this property to be residential, likely a budding neighborhood. Everything except for the property to the north, which is commercial. Everything around it is planned and zoned for residential use. So, I mean, that's pretty clear. The second one is whether the proposed district and the uses allowed are compatible with the site's physical, geological, hydrological, and other environmental features. So basically, what we have to look at is not just the particular use that's being proposed, because anybody purchasing a property or owning a property and then getting it rezoned has the right to use it for any of those uses that are permitted in that particular zoning district, not just what they've indicated it's for. Because hypothetically, and I've seen this happen, somebody gets a property rezoned and then they sell it, and then somebody comes in and they use it for something different, which is normal. It's how our system works. So when I looked at the MXD district that's being proposed and the wide range of uses that are in there, they're not all compatible with the residential neighborhood. Yes, some of them may be, but others definitely are not. And we have to look at that whole wide range of uses that are permitted. And then the last one is if rezoned is a site capable of accommodating all of the uses that are in there. Once again, the site is capable of accommodating some of the uses, but other uses maybe not. And the example I use is what if somebody wants to put a drive-through window and turn that into some kind of a restaurant, fast food operation? There may not be enough room on that site to be able to get the stacking spaces that are needed. So with that, following the three criteria there, based on that analysis, we are recommending that the planning commission recommend denial of the rezoning request for the property at 644 North Madison Street from R1B, single-family residential, to MXD mixed use, since it fails to meet the rezoning standards listed above, including the following. Number one, the request does not match a future land use designation on the future land use map in the City of Perry master plan. Number two, conditions have not changed since adoption of the master plan. It would warrant approving your rezoning that is contrary to the future land use plan. Number three, the wide range of uses allowed in the MXD mixed-use district are not compatible with either the subject site or the abutting properties. And number four, the site is not capable of accommodating all of the uses that are permitted in the requested MXD district. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have, or if later you have any.
Anybody have any questions? I'm got a young lady back there.
I'm sorry, you said it was a part of Perry's master plan. What do you mean by Perry's master plan?
The City of Perry has a master plan that covers what the future land uses should be, and the zoning is based on that.
It's available on the website.
And so if you look at the future land use plan, which is the plan that we follow when we're creating the zoning ordinance and the zoning map, it tells you what the uses should be. And in this particular case, it's residential.
Anybody else have any questions?
Not at this time.
Dick, I went by there and there were vehicles out in front of there. Back in there again?
The vehicles sat out in front, I can't say whether they're in there or not. They, after they received the letter from the attorney, they stopped the operation in the back part where I'm located. No more trucks came in and there were fuel unloaded out in front. So, that's as much as I know. But I don't think they're operating. There's the man right there, he can answer your ask.
We have another question.
I think I heard you say that drive-through windows wouldn't be allowed in mixed use, but I thought they were. I'm sorry, I thought they will not allow in mixed use.
I believe drive-up windows are allowed in mixed use.
They are allowed?
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to check too.
Mr. Chairman, there are other uses too, I just pulled that out as an example. There are other uses in there that you wouldn't want to have in a residential district.
Restaurant with a drive-through facility needs a special land use in mixed.
Yes.
So it's not automatically available, but there is a special land use possibility.
Tell me what page you're on?
Pardon?
Do you need to tell me what page you're on?
86.
Thank you.
Carol.
Mr. Alonti, I understand that rezoning is straight mixed use, but what about a special use? Did you look at that?
Mr. Chairman, when we look at a rezoning, we're just looking at the zoning district it's being applied for. And we have to look at all the special land uses and permitted uses that are under that. It's possible that a different district could be requested, but in this particular case, I only looked at the one that was requested. It's all been legally looked at.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. Are you going to stay for the rest of the meeting? Okay, all right, thank you. Is Justin English available?
I'm here, I'm here, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, and the others hear you?
I don't know if I'm on.
Just waiting for people to connect in, Mr. English.
I'm here.
Okay, Justin, do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
Just, just that, there's, I think, after watching the last meeting, there was some discussion about a conditional zoning request. And I, and I think there was some reference to a previous letter I'd sent concerning the costs involved and interpretation issues. I, I think with the request that's been made, it makes a lot of sense to potentially consider a conditional zoning request. But as far as the, the proposed zoning and the, and the actual use that they're proposing, you know, all the comments just made are, are correct. So, you know, I think with what's being used, the board, the commission has to decide, does it make sense to do a conditional zoning or not? As opposed to potentially changing the zoning or not? Again, it depends on, on what the intent is. But with conditional zoning, the, the commission can put conditions on the zoning to prevent the owner from doing certain things, or not doing certain things, or even change the condition of the property. And just by way of example, one of the suggestions that was made to me was, on Madison Street, there's parking that is by the building, and that's really a residential street. And, and the suggestion was make the owner change that back to a residential street with sidewalk, remove the parking, and have the ingress and egress be off of Britton Road. So that, that's one of the things you can do with conditional zoning.
So that would not be mixed use?
That would not be mixed use, no. And so again, with the, with the request for mixed use and the, the discussions about the special use permits, they're, they're two separate processes. And so if you change it to mixed use, he's correct. All the, all the proposed uses that are permitted in mixed use could still be allowed. You wouldn't have to get a special use permit. It wouldn't be conditioned on them using that property for that use and getting a special use permit. The other, the other discussion that was, that was had with regard to the special use permit was, well, once he stops using it, then there's some kind of reversion or some kind of change. And that's not the case. If the owner gets a special use permit and sells, then potentially the new buyer is going to have that same property, it's going to be zoned however, if it was changed, it'll be zoned how it's zoned, which is to mixed use. And then they could potentially use it for any permitted uses, or again, apply for a special use permit.
So if the owner sold the property, and then he, he would lose the special use permit?
Well, again, that depends, right? So if you, if he owns the property and sells it as, so let's say it's the business entity that's, that's got the special use permit. If he sells that as an ongoing entity, then the entity has the special use permit. Just because we have a new guy that we're dealing with, doesn't mean the special use permit necessarily went away. Plus, if it's mixed use, as, as, all those other uses could still be, the permitted uses, they wouldn't have to get a special use permit. So if they wanted to change the use, they could, they could potentially do it. You know, they may have to do a site plan or something, but that, if it's a permitted use, they could do it.
So they would be doing a special use permit under, what is it now, R1B?
They could not, I think it's residential right now. I don't think they could apply for a special use permit for what they're proposing.
So they would have to apply for B1 with special use permit, or MXD is a special, and a special use permit?
So the.
MXD, they could get away with it, but what, what, where are we applying a conditional, what are we applying the conditional zoning to? MXD?
Conditional zoning would probably be, I, I think you may have to, to make it kind of mixed. I, I would, it makes sense to do mixed zoning, the MXD zoning, because of the professional nature of what they're proposing. But they also have the added component of storing their inventory there. And when I went through the zoning ordinance, it didn't seem that that, that met the definition of just a professional office, accountants and attorneys and every other professional that's kind of referenced by example there, they don't store product. And so it almost, that almost went to industrial. But I think with mixed, with conditional zoning, that can be one of the approved conditions, that they are allowed to store their inventory. So yeah, so I guess the short answer to your question is yes. It makes, the MXD zoning might make sense.
So then we would, we would come back to the applicant and say, you'll need to apply as conditional, as conditional zoning?
See if they're, see if they're interested in doing conditional zoning. And if they are, then figure out what are those conditions? So is it going to be, so I, I think it would be limited to them as the owner, the, the Mr. Thomas that we're dealing with. Then, that it would, if it changed ownership in any form or fashion, then that would, then that would be revert back to the residential zoning. And then any other conditions that the, the planning commission wants to put on them, whether it's limitation on the number of vehicles, or limitations on the, or those changes that I talked about, changes of the property features, things like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Justin, this is our language to summarize that it would, under conditional zoning, basically it would continue to stay residential, and we have potentially some appropriate qualifiers that might allow for the current owner to operate with whatever restrictions was placed up. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, could someone, I couldn't really, I couldn't really hear.
The question that I had is whether or not it would continue to stay residential if we elected that, and would intern conditions on the current owner that should he, he elect to sell it, would revert back to residential?
That's right, the, the current owner, so he'd be, he'd be under the conditions, if he, if he followed the conditions that are put on him and did what he was required to do, then he'd be able to operate his business there as, as proposed. And then if he sold the business, or transferred, or left, somebody else stepped in, then we could, then it would revert back to residential. And that a new person couldn't come in and then operate that same business or any other business under mixed use. It would be residential zone still.
Thank you.
But he, I'm sorry, go ahead, Gus.
Just to clarify, it would become mixed use with special provisions. But the mixed use would not apply to a subsequent owner of the business, or should the business leave the facility, it would not apply to that property. Is that correct?
That's right, it'd be, it'd be specific to this individual, this business. And if any of those things changed, because that would be one of the conditions of this mixed-use zoning, this conditional zoning, then that condition would disappear, and as a result, we revert back to residential.
But we can't take it as residential and put special restrictions on that and allow his business to operate there, okay?
No.
Thank you, Dustin. I guess we're going to close our regular meeting now and open up the public hearing. So does anybody, anybody have any comments from the public?
People aren't able to get on their phone to hear. And is there something you can do?
Are they using the instructions to dial in?
Yes.
I just did, and I just have to wait for the host to let me in.
Okay, let me. I'm not seeing anybody else.
Is your phone number six two six at the end?
No, it was eight one three zero.
I don't really know, I can't restart it. It isn't showing me anybody in the waiting room, for people who are trying to get in. I don't, I don't have any more requests. I don't know how to leave the meeting without coming back in.
We'll get to it. What did you say, your last four of her?
I'm off now, but it was eight one three zeros.
I have eight, nine eight three three, one six two six, five five nine nine.
Nope, not me.
Those are the people I have in right now, plus Baba Ke, Justin English, Kelly Wilson, Carol, and myself.
Nine eight three three is me.
That's it. It's right now. And I'm not getting any more requests. Is that even trying to actively get in now?
No, none anymore.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other comments?
Yeah, thank you, I'm Ryan McNally, I'm an attorney. I represent James Thomas and his company, JT and Associates. And it was his application for the change of zoning to the site at 644 Madison. And I wanted, first of all, thank you for having us here today. And I just wanted to talk about that site a little bit. I have been over to the site, and it's a, it's a unique property. It sounds like it was a religious organization historically that has not been in use for, my understanding is approximately five years, that the property was on the market for quite some time during that five-year period with apparently little interest. It's a residential zone, but does not appear to be a residential piece of property. There's not a house there, it doesn't look like there's ever been a house there. It's not particularly compatible to a residential use. There are businesses directly across the street from this property. And I think it's particularly, particularly unique in that Mr. Thomas's proposed use of the property is for a commercial use that would have very little impact on the surrounding neighborhood or community. It would appear to have less impact than the prior religious organization that was also a tax-exempt organization. And I think that it would help the City of Perry, obviously on its tax role, as well as by just adding another small business and member of the business community like Mr. Thomas and his employees. Mr. Thomas is here today, he'd like to answer any questions about his business or staffing. And really, the summary is, he looked at this property because he really liked the property and the location being that it's in the City of Perry, which for him is a, not only a nice city, but a nice geographical location. And he had some positive feedback with the city prior to closing on his purchase. And also, you know, had some dialogue with the agents involved on both sides as to, you know, could I potentially use this as a, as a commercial property? And he, he was definitely under the impression that he could, and that's kind of where we are today. So he, he really would, would like to continue what his plan was for that property, not only in the near future, but, but for the long term. And like I said, I just, I don't see with that particular parcel, it's, it's just, it's an interesting parcel because it is so close to the other commercial uses. And I could see that, you know, that there might be some commercial use that would be objectionable in that setting, given that it is in a residential neighborhood and the proximity to other houses. But I don't, I don't think that that objection would be reasonable, given the use that Mr. Thomas has proposed. I would invite Mr. Thomas to say anything else that he has, and of course, you to ask any questions of, of him that you have.
Mr. McNally, can you spell your name for me?
Sure, it's Ryan, R-Y-A-N, McNally, M-C capital N-A-L-L-Y.
Thank you.
Sure.
You have a question behind you?
Yes, but if it's okay, can I stay seated?
What?
If it's okay, can I stay seated?
Yeah.
Okay. My name's Jessica Kuzda, K-U-Z is in zebra, D is in David, E-K. I live next door to said establishment. I own the home, I've owned it for about two years. I have a unique situation where I'm at home for a long period of time. So I see what goes on, I see what doesn't go on. This gentleman down here was talking about the master plan for Perry. And kind of talking about theories of everything. I didn't meet theory, I met Jimmy. And I also met a gentleman who's been here for 57 years. And he was coming to my house to get my idea of what I felt about the proposal. Both gentlemen I opened the door to, very kind, polite. Jimmy, right off the kick, just was telling me all about what he was doing. This other gentleman first tells me that he lives across the street. And I'm like, okay. Fully knowing that he doesn't, because I, I know the people that live across the street. But I'm listening to what he has to say. And he tells me he's taking care of his mother. And I said, oh, I'm so sorry for that, sir. And he's like, yeah, I, I actually own the building, the house down here. That's all blue. And I said, oh, okay. He said, uh, and he goes on, and he was worried about the traffic. I was like, well, sir, again, the establishment has a long back route. They can make that a parking lot, and they can create the exit out to Britton to avoid traffic on Madison, to keep for the buses, to keep for the traffic in general, I would say. Because it is a pretty busy street, to be honest. And also, Jimmy, you are correct, Jimmy's business is very, it's in office care, administrative. So there would be, I would probably think maybe four or five cars. But again, that would fit in said parking lot in the front if you wanted to, but, or if you can make it in the back. And I just, I don't see an issue with a young man trying to feed his family, especially during COVID. It's just, it's crazy that we're arguing on why this establishment should be made when there's so many bigger things to be looking at. I've watched that church crack. It gets taken care of once a month. I know the gentleman who pulls in all the leaves that uses them in the back to compost his backyard. He picks up my leaves right with it. He comes to the house every year like clockwork to pick up leaves. I mean, besides that, nobody touches the church. It just sits there. At least this way, it's being used. It's being operated, hopefully giving funds and taxes to the city. And it might be the best thing that entered Perry, you just don't know yet. All I'm saying is, that's a better plan to have next door to me than another lion's den or something else that I might not be able to control, or what we are all trying to control.
Well, that, that's one of the things that we're concerned with.
Right, and, and this gentleman voiced that to me. And I, I told him, I said, I don't know if you ever heard the saying, but everything comes with a little bit of chance. Everything. My daughter starts elementary school this year. That's chance for me, trust me. So scary, yes, but I'm going to develop and move forward. That church has been sitting there. It, it would have come down if we had the money to. We would have done something else and built it up from there if we could have, I'm sure. It's a beautiful. It's a beautiful place. What he's done looks great inside. Somebody's caring to it. Somebody's putting time to it. This should be a positive role of effects, I guess, if you know what I mean. And again, I find it very small, everything that's going on in the world. And I understand the fear, but there's fear in everything we do.
Well, our biggest concern in doing something like this is that, you know, he will go into business and do what he says. And, you know, everybody said he's a nice gentleman and so on and so forth, and do what he said he's going to do. And then all of a sudden, he decides, well, I'm going to move somewhere else, so I'm going to sell the building. Once it's rezoned to mixed use, then that opens up all kinds of things.
I understand that. They were saying they were worried about a drive-through window. I mean, reality, if it did turn into a fast food building, I don't think that would be bad at all because it'd be generating food for our community and work. So again, it's giving to the community. No matter what this was going to be, this is, this was going to happen, is what I'm trying to say. And I understand your apprehension. And no, just off of Jimmy, I didn't go this direction from Brit. I come to find out my father, who's a financial advisor, he knows Jimmy. If my father says he's good-
Is Jimmy this gentleman?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And if my father says he's pure and he's good, then that's all I need to hear. So, but I have had conversations with Jimmy and I've had conversations with people of the community that were interested in the thought of the person that lived next door. So that's my thought.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I've heard speak.
Could you state your name, please?
I don't know, three, four times about traffic, activity of different sorts and everything. I've talked with Jimmy quite a bit and have watched what went on in the beginning. And now that it's, it's like at a close right now, so nothing's going on there. The activity that's going to be at this building with this business is going to be more minimal than it was when it was a church building. They're going to have, I don't know, meetings, informational meetings, maybe once a month. And it's going to be family meetings. I saw the first meeting they had and the kids were there, children. And this is just, just good people, good people. Jimmy told me, I told Jimmy, I said, I don't know what I'm going to do when this, when this isn't going to be God's house anymore, when this isn't a church, because I attended church there a number of years. I don't know exactly how many, but a number of years. And Jimmy said, it's still a church. I said, great, great to him. It is still going to be God's house. There's not going to be any wild parties, any, what would you call, beer barrels or whatever you call them. The building could be sold to somebody that turns somehow or other turns that building into a, like, a two-apartment building. And there could be police problems all the time, you know? And the houses are going to be there. And I just think it's just going to be a quiet business. The meetings, he told me today, he said, the meetings aren't necessarily going to always be here. He said, but this is a great place. He likes it already. So I'm clearly in favor of him being out here, just from what I've talked. All of the employees, well, I guess they're not employees. There's the one employee Ken. Everybody that's in there is nice, friendly, happy. Ready to, they offer, we want some coffee. You know, we got pizza. How about a pizza? They buy their products from around Perry here. They go to the restaurants here in Perry. They buy their gas here. Gosh, there's probably more that I'm, that I'm just not-
Could I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Would you state your name, please?
My name?
Yeah.
Bob Smith.
There you go.
At twenty-eight, forty-three, West Britton Road.
Now, where is that in relation to the church? East, west?
East, I live immediately next door to the new middle school.
Oh, okay.
Back up off the road. It's the little brick house back up there. So I've taken care of the properties, the church properties there for years and kept the lawn mowed, trimmed the trees, all this kind of stuff. I was trying to have a flower garden going out at the corner, but the water got turned off on me, so.
You can use my water.
But I, pardon?
You can use my water. You can use my water anytime.
Oh, okay. Now I got a water system. But I think it would be a favorable thing for Perry to have this become a business zone. And I, I've talked with him, maybe extensively. We've had some pretty good talks. And he has no idea of selling anything. He wants the business to be here because it's more of a central location for the other people to come to. So I don't see any way, shape, or form that he's going to be selling the business or, you know, moving the business to another, selling the building. It's, it's all positive for Perry. And I guess, I guess I'm going to stop now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? This is Jimmy.
Hey, everyone. I took notes because I always get off track, so I'm going to try to stay on course a little bit tonight. But first off, I want to say thank you to everybody for coming out here tonight and expressing your opinion. Another no one really knows is me, other than what you've heard. So I kind of want to tell you a little bit about myself. My name's Jimmy Thomas. I was born in Potaski, Michigan. I grew up about 20 miles south of Grand Rapids, a small town in Caledonia. And I started with this company, actually, when I was 18, just a part-time salesperson. And I met my wife shortly after that, when I was 19. And we've been together for, going on 14 years. I married almost nine. And I have a seven-year-old son, five-year-old daughter. And we live in Ionia area. Started this company, JT and Associates, 11 years ago in Boyne City. That's where I opened my first office. And I kind of have two other branches, up in Burge Run and also down in Waterford. And what attracted me to Perry was several reasons. First, like my attorney said, the geographical location of Perry is ideal for what we do and where we go. And then secondly, is the people that I've been able to meet since being in Perry. Whether it was cashiers at the gas stations or, you know, McDonald's or restaurants, even people at the post office, all super friendly. And whether it's my new friend Bob over here, who has helped me tremendously with odd and things at the building. And everyone's just treating me with really, really great kindness. That's when I fell in love with the city of Perry. And I know there are concerns about rezoning the building. Just wanted to give everyone here a peace of mind. We have no plans of selling. As I said, I've been in business for 11 years. This is the first building I've ever bought. And I don't plan on leaving. It's a perfect location, perfect setup for what we do. A little bit about the company. We market a Michigan-made certified air purification system. We sell our product through word-of-mouth advertising. We do in-home demonstrations of our product. So we don't sell anything out of our store. We sell everything in homes. And so, so we have no retail customers coming in, buying products, very few, if ever. The product that we actually sell is manufactured right here in Michigan by Rex Air. Everything's manufactured up in Cadillac, Michigan, where they employ hundreds of people at Cadillac. And also, a lot of people down in their world headquarters building in Troy, Michigan. Sold in over 85 countries worldwide. We've been around for 85 years, so it's not a new product. It's not going anywhere. Since I've been in business 11 years in a row, every year I've had an increase in business. So we're not going backwards, we're going forward. It's really cool. And like my attorney said, out of all the types of businesses out there, I would really say that we would be among the most unintrusive business models there are. We would love to be an asset for Perry, whether it is buying all of our, you know, food from local restaurants, general stores, you know, using the post office. I mean, you know, it's all comes way back here. And we just really want to be an asset to the city of Perry, you know? I want to say thank you all again for taking the time to listen to me. And I do hope we can, you know, move forward. So, if you have any questions.
Okay, I have, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
You mentioned other locations. Burge Run was one of them. That's the only one I wrote down.
Yep.
Are you currently operating those other locations now?
Yeah.
So they're under your control?
They are under my control.
So how much time would you spend in Perry?
Me personally, all my time. It would be where I go.
Okay, how many other locations do you have?
Well, I have Perry and then Burge Run and Waterford.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
I thought there was something about, I hear something about Cadillac in there.
That's where our products are actually manufactured and made is in Michigan.
Okay.
So it's a Michigan-made product.
Okay. And what about the training?
Training is more, we do, we do a lot of our meetings online, just on Zoom or things like that. Sometimes we'll have a hands-on training, which mostly is once a month. It's, you know, we have a once a month. We have representatives come in, we do some recognition, we do some training on our products. And it usually lasts for about an hour and it's about once a month. It's just very small.
Any other questions?
Kelly, do you have any questions? Hate to wake you up.
Ionia to Perry seems like a very long commute. What plans do you have to move to Perry?
Are you going to move to Perry?
I'm moving to Perry. I just built a house above property two years ago. It's possibility, you know? It is a 15-minute drive for me, so it's a little bit of a cruise. So it's not out of the question.
Did you hear that, Kelly?
I did. I'd like to know the nature of any complaints that might have been filed against him with the Chamber of Commerce, Better Business Bureau, anything like that.
She wants to know about any complaints that have been filed against you with the Better Business Bureau or the local Chamber of Commerce with your businesses?
Eleven years, maybe one, maybe one.
And what was the nature, what was the nature of that?
She was asking what the nature of that one complaint was.
I have to look back several years ago, at least. And I think it was just one of the representatives that's no longer affiliated with my company.
I see.
I can remember all the nuances to that.
So how was that resolved?
She's asking how that was resolved.
It was definitely resolved with the customer ended up taking the product back, reimbursed anything that was to happen.
Any questions from anyone else?
How many people would you envision on your training days that you physically have on-site at the facility here in Perry? About?
An average, it could be from 10 people to 25 people.
And that's the once a month or thereabouts?
Yep. And again, I mean, we don't, you know, we have two other locations. So sometimes we'll have it at the Burge Run office or something a little bit down in the Waterford office.
I have a question. So on the days when 25 people are present, what's the plan for parking all of those cars?
I believe, I've counted the parking spaces. Maybe I'd have to, you know, redo it again. I think even when I was looking at the building, I kind of counted, you know? I feel like most people can fit right in the front of the building.
So that would be the existing parking that's along Madison right now?
That's correct. Yep. If that was an issue, you know, there's a lot of land on the side, you know? So you put cones out, you know? But yeah, primarily speaking, we would be in the front of the building.
Okay, sorry, I'm writing. I'm looking to answer.
You will.
Okay, Mr. Thomas, I have a few questions.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thomas and I have been well acquainted.
Yep.
I understand you got well acquainted with my wife.
Yes.
She has some concerns that I think you know some of my concerns.
I do.
How are we going to solve them, probably?
Well, the first thing about in the back of the property is obviously contingent on what happens with the rezoning. First and foremost, I have no problem putting up privacy funds.
No, I'm not interested in the privacy fund as much as I'm interested in keeping the semi out of my backyard.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, that won't happen. Yeah.
At 5:45 this morning, I had a big dumpster truck in there. He climbed that thing and unloaded it at 5:45.
Oh, the waste, the waste management thing. Okay, yeah, yeah. I mean, we could definitely get that moved.
Well, not-
Or just get a small.
As much as my neighbor next door said to me, Dick, what happened at 5:45 this morning? It made a big laugul.
Yeah.
I said, look at that green dumpster out there.
Okay.
That was a concern that just happened this morning.
Yep. And again, this is the first I'm hearing of that, so.
Well, I realize that because I hadn't had a chance to talk to you.
Yeah, that's right.
I was definitely going to let you know about it.
Well, I appreciate that. And obviously, where the dumpster lies now, several things, we can make it smaller. We don't need that big of one. Putting a smaller dumpster in the front is fine as well. You know, I have no problem with either of those.
My biggest concern is I don't know how we're going to be able to rezone it to what he's requesting.
Well, that was a monkey wrench that came in with Justin English that we had. As far as mixed use, if it's rezoned to mixed use, it's mixed use, period. That's it. Justin English, who is the city attorney for Perry, brought up a conditional land use. And a conditional land use, from what I understand it, now don't quote me on this, but from what I understand it, we could put certain conditions on there, such as that front parking asking you to make it a lawn, which would eliminate the traffic on Madison and make everybody come in off Britton Road. And then if you should sell it, the conditional land use would deteriorate and it would revert back to residential.
Okay.
Did everybody else understand it that way?
I understood that we can make it that conditional special use and it's not a problem.
Yeah.
And it's been known forever that if it's sold under those conditions, it reverts. It's not a new thing, you know, and that is not a problem, really. It does become conditional. It does become conditional, and we set the conditions. So it would not stay if it wasn't, just whatever, it would not stay that way if it was sold.
Chairman?
Um, Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification. There's, seems to be a little mixing of the terms here. Uh, what you're talking about is actually a conditional rezoning, which is allowed under the State Zoning Act.
Right.
Uh, same thing, but under conditional rezoning, um, it gives you the ability to put whatever conditions on. It's an agreement between the applicant and the city. And you can put any conditions in there that make sense, obviously. And it's typically a document that's drafted up by the applicant's attorney and worked out with the city's attorney, uh, what those conditions are. Now, the thing you have to be aware of is you, as planning commissioners and the city council members, cannot indicate what those conditions are to be. You're not, by law, you're not allowed to request conditions. They have to be offered by the applicant. Now, that doesn't stop the staff, including consultants, attorneys, and so forth, from working with the applicant and talking about those conditions. There's not, you know, what they should be, okay? So whatever comes to you would have your, the concerns and so forth. It just has to be handled a certain way. So if there, if you are inclined to, and you're saying, yeah, we like the use, but we understand that a straight rezoning is going to open up Pandora's box, then that would be the, the logical step for them. They would have to reapply, and when they reapply, they'd have to attach the conditions that they are offering. And once again, that can all be worked out behind the scenes with the city people, whoever that might include. It just can't come to this board and can't go to the city council and have you ask for those conditions. Doesn't mean you can't drop a note in city offices and say, hey, I think this is something that should be considered. Okay, but you can't, you, to the staff, but you can't ask that as a board. You can't ask them for those conditions, so...
Well, Mr. Avantini, that means then if he did sell it, then the conditions go away, right? He reversed back to what it was?
If that's a condition. One of the conditions can be that, that if the property... You know, you gotta be within reason, and his attorney's wanting to make sure that he's protected. But one of the conditions can be that, um, it can only be used for this. And if, in fact, the use changes, uh, that the city has the ability to revert the zoning back. I don't think it can happen automatically. I think that there has to be an actual action on the part of the city. Uh, but it would have to be something that the both parties agree to. So it, it's like a, it's, it's basically what we used to refer to as contract zoning. Uh, it was a way that the state allowed us to do contract zoning without it really being called contract zoning. It's a conditional rezoning. But once again, if there's, if you're inclined to like the use and you think that it's good use of the property and, you know, with the right conditions, you think it'd be acceptable use of the property, um, it might fall under a different zone. It might be B1 or some other district. But, um, you would have those conditions attached to it. And anything, including if the, if the use is no longer there, that you'd have the ability to revert it back. Is one possibility. But obviously, there, his attorney's going to want to make sure he's protected so that he doesn't end up with a useless property afterwards either. So that's why it's a negotiated process.
So if it's rezon, if it, would it then be rezoned mixed-use conditional? Or would it be rezoned, we'd have to determine what it would be a... I mean, is it, is it changing from residential to something else?
To something else. But the applicant would request, would make the actual request that be a certain, like, he requested MX, whatever, in the mixed-use district. He would request that it's a conditional rezoning request, and maybe he makes it B1. Maybe he keeps it what he's requesting now, but he makes it conditional. So there's a lot of options here, okay? And, um, and I think the key is going to be finding the district. I recommend finding the district that's most appropriate, okay? That, that seems to fit the best, that would have the least impact on the area. And then having a conditional rezoning request that covers up the concerns that people might have in the neighborhood or, or whatever in the planning commission and city council, so that there's a high comfort level, that you're getting exactly what, what you're saying. It's not, it's not to imply that you're not, you have the best intentions in the world. You know, I've been doing this for thirty-eight years. I've seen all sorts of things happen. I've seen people walk out of a meeting and you find out, like, an hour later, they're filming a car accident. So, I mean, you hit the fence like that, but it's, it's people that are involved in zoning and planning and looking at precedents and what the community has. And we can't look at personalities and, and people. We have to look at the use, and we have to look, because if we're all gone, this is going to continue to be a certain zoning. And we have to make sure that we're protecting future generations also, not just this. But a conditional, once again, if this use is something that you find acceptable and something you think would be appropriate there with the right conditions, that would be the way to go. And then you have to reapply, uh, because there has to be a different notice in the paper, a different legal notice. And you want to have those conditions ready to be brought forward. So you're not spending hours here talking about conditions, because you can't do that.
Makes sense.
So one of the conditions could be that if it was sold, it reverted back to residential. Uh, that could be written in there?
That would be something we actually talk to the city attorney about. I know, I, you could, because we, we deal with uses. You could put in there that, um, if the use changes, that something could be triggered, okay? But I don't know that just the sale of the property would automatically allow, give you the ability to rezone it back to residential. But a change in the use potentially could. Because we're not supposed to look at land uses based on ownership. We're supposed to look at them based on the use. Does that agree with your question? Actually, I, I've taught this for the state of Michigan on conditional rezoning. I go to communities and talk about it, so I'm pretty familiar with it. And I've represented a private applicant in the city on a conditional rezoning. So I've been on both sides of the table. And who, who are you and what's your... Um, I'm Carmen Avantini. I'm with CID Planning. We're located in Fenton, and, uh, we're community planners. I'm just actually filling in for one of my partners tonight. But I teach that, so I'm, I'm pretty familiar with conditional rezonings and certainly help with... But you have to have your attorney involved. It's really, it ends up being a legal document.
So conditional rezoning is pretty common, though?
Yeah, it is now. It's becoming more common. Um, the, the thing you have to be careful of is that it's being used as, as a way to mitigate possible impacts for a use that you might think is acceptable. Um, I've also seen it used as a way to try and circumvent ordinance requirements. And you don't want that either. Um, but it sounds like, from what I've heard, um, you've got a property that hasn't been used in a long time. It's been vacant for a while. You know, it might, if it's something that, where you like the use, that's being talked about, that you're worried about, the things that I talked about with the, the zoning and master planning, then that might be the right approach. And the applicant is free to apply for a conditional rezoning anyway.
So what would be the next steps? The two attorneys would have to talk?
Yeah, definitely, they would have to talk and talk about conditions and, you know, and, and the city attorney could say, okay, I want to, you know, what it, you know, I want to, anybody who's got thoughts on this should contact me and let me know what your thoughts are. And so we can include that in our discussions with the applicant. Um, I mean, personally, if my recommendation to the applicant is, if it were me, I would pull the application and put in a new request, request as a conditional rezoning and have my attorney help work out that agreement beforehand.
That's what I was going to ask, if you should pull it, start over, rather than have us reject it and go through that.
Yeah. I mean, that, that, Mr. Chairman, that's the best way.
Now, supposing that they come up with twenty-five items that would be conditional? We had no input into what they came up with. Can we reject some of those as a board? Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, you could reject the, the entire document, but the goal is to not, it, it... The goal for the applicant and really for you is to come up with conditional rezoning requests that meets any concerns that you might have. And that's the whole reason for doing it. Okay, so it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to apply for conditional rezoning and not get, gauge what the city is looking for and what the neighbors might be looking for, whoever. So you want to, you want to make an application that has all of those things covered so that when you show up at a meeting with some discussion, that it's generally acceptable and moves on to the council.
And in, in your opinion, is there, is there prejudice attached to this current, uh, application? If the application's not pulled, is there a reason that you could not, you could not apply for a conditional rezoning?
Um, no, no, there isn't. Not, you could move forward. You know, my, the reason I recommend that you pull it is sometimes you say it doesn't, but sometimes it gives impressions to, to, you know, once it goes up to council, like...
Yeah.
You know, it just, it attaches something negative to it when you have the opportunity to do something completely positive. And, uh, and it just, you know, you're getting a negative recommendation from the planning commission to the council. And then, especially when you know there's another alternative route that you can follow. I mean, that's just my recommendation. You're free, obviously, to do whatever you'd like, but, um, the, the most expedient way to come up with something that both sides can live with would be to do a conditional rezoning request.
Who are you here acting under that?
Uh, the city.
Okay, yes. Um, and I reviewed the mixed-use ordinance. This isn't that the next user would have absolute free discretion to put in whatever they want. That mixed-use ordinance was fairly controlled. It looked like a large portion of it was for a special use permit and as small as I showed.
Yeah, but still, it's, you know, it's, uh, as you know, it's difficult, but if you meet all the conditions of the ordinance, it's difficult to turn down special land use. And, um, it's just there's some things, and it doesn't, plus, I mean, it doesn't actually matter at all. It isn't even close. So that's why I think a conditional rezoning would be the best way to, to handle it. Usually, if it's a bigger property, we'll recommend a planning development or something like that. But for a small property like this, um, conditional rezoning really is, in my opinion, is the best way to go.
We have a question back there.
Um, in regards to that already existing parking lot, three houses in a row use it on a daily basis. I mean, I could tell you make and model a car, but I couldn't tell you the people's names. But, I mean, it's full of cars all the time. And this is prior to Jimmy. Um, and they just, I'm just saying, if you're doing something for the community, I know my neighbors enjoy that being there, and they probably would take advantage of it with or without Jimmy.
Now, you say the parking lot, the one on Madison or the one...
Yeah, the one on Madison.
Well, when I went by there today, there were three cars parked there.
Well, you had a meeting today too, so, I mean, maybe, yeah. But at worst case, I don't think you'd have more than four to six. I haven't seen more than... I haven't seen more than three.
I'm sorry, can you spell your name again for me, please?
Sure. Uh, Jessica Kuzda. K-U-Z as in zero, D as in David, E-K.
E-K. K-U-Z-D.
E-K.
E-K, thank you. Sorry. I want to make sure I got that right. Jessica, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Um, I think my comment right now is this feels like the best compromise. It is a property that has been unused and could be allowed to go downhill. The proposed business seems to be fairly quiet. There has been some concern from the neighbors that in a conditional, um, conditional zoning request could be addressed. You've expressed interest in, you know, in good faith in doing those things, even the things that, you know, have been brought to your attention today. You've been, um, very attentive in saying you will get that corrected. Your neighbors, um, have faith in you that you will do the right thing. So this feels like, to me, feels like a really good way so that you're protected, your interests are protected, the city's interests are protected, and the neighbors are protected. This feels like a good fit.
Is, I agree, Genevieve. Is Justin still on? Is, if he is, does he have any comments as our actual city attorney?
Yeah, he's coming back in.
I live just across the street from him. And...
Oh.
What?
My name is Don Grubbe.
Hello, Justin.
I live just right straight across the street from him. I am one of those that does park over there. And here he is. Said it was fine with him. And it's, like she said, it has been used for parking for the neighbor down the other side of the street. And it's, I don't think that it's, he would object to any of that, who tells?
Okay.
Can you tell me your name, please?
Donald Grubbe, G-R-U-B-B.
Thank you.
Lila?
Yeah, I don't know. Uh, as a zoning administrator, I don't have the book memorized, and I don't know all the, all the ins and outs of all of this conditional thing. But, uh, as I understood, the allowable uses under mixed use, I don't see any objection to anything that he wants to do. Obviously, anything can change, and we all know that. Uh, I think that, uh, the parking lot thing, that's, that's ridiculous because it's a parking spot in front of a business or would be in front of a business like we have right down Main Street. So I don't see where that'd be a big issue, and there's a big parking lot there, so it could be used. So all the things that have been mentioned and discussed here seem to fit within mixed use. It's whether or not we want to switch him to mixed use and whether we can live with that, I think, is, is the question. Not really whether he's a nice guy, which I think he is. That doesn't have any bearing, as far as I can tell, because the business could be there one day or ten years. And, and then we all know that it can change. So if we zoned it to mixed use and it fits all the use of them, the qualifications for mixed use, it seems like that's, that's the question and the only question to me. Not necessarily how, what his business is, how it's run, or what the neighbors think or anything else. Those are all conditions that should be considered, but, uh, we're just switching one zone to another. And can it, isn't it possible to rezone later if something does come up? Isn't, that, that's a question I always have.
Yeah, someone can. I think the concern is, is that if, if Mr. Thomas decided, for whatever reason, to sell the business, um, he had another opportunity, he's going to another state, that there are a number of, there are a number of uses that are not permitted, but there are a number that are also strictly permitted or with special land use. So it isn't so much, it seems the community has good faith in Mr. Thomas. It's that if he had a different business opportunity and his business took another direction, who, what would be permitted with the new owner? So that's the hesitation here, and that safeguard that we're trying to get is so that Mr. Thomas can have his business here, yet the city can still be protected for future land use.
And I understand that. We've been bit a few times with those kind of things.
Mm-hmm.
And a retail store is still a retail store no matter what they sell, apparently. But we do, we do have some, uh, options when a new business comes to town to whether or not we approve of that new business. And they have to go through the process of being accepted and approved when they come into town. So, uh, we went through this with several other businesses. In fact, right around the corner, the gas station, I mean, the, the car lot. So we've been through those things, and, uh, I understand the neighbors' concerns, and I understand the possibilities of things being changed after a period of time and being something we don't want it to be. But, uh, a church parking lot has a lot more cars in it than what he's describing. So that should not be an issue, I don't think. It's the, and what his business is, as well as is described, I don't think should be an issue. I think the issue is whether or not we feel that we want to rezone to mixed use or not. That, that simple as that. And I don't think it really relies on whether or not we like him or whether we like his business or how long it will last. I think we have to just decide if we want to change that to mixed use from residential.
Yeah, I think so. I think the biggest concern that I have is, so, under permitted, so this would not require a special land use. It would not require a rezoning or the city be involved at all. If, if Mr. Thomas were to sell that property...
Right.
It could become a party store.
It could be. But it would have to be approved when that business...
It would not have to be approved. Not under, not under Table eight point zero-two. It is permitted, no special land use. It could become a party store.
We went quite through quite an approval process with Johnny Bees and with KFC and, uh, several other businesses that came to town.
There are. And there may be in part in the building, if a, if a new structure is built on there. But in terms of what business could be in there, that would, could revert. So, so if they kept the building as it is and decided to put a convenience store in there... they kept the building as it is and decided to put a convenience store in there, well, MDA and other ones would have some input as to that, but again, it leaves the city open to, if they put in a convenience store and they meet all of those requirements, we have to tell them yes. We can't just decide we don't want to, because then they can come back and sue us.
Right.
And say, convenience store is permitted, we've met all the conditions, you have to let us in. And now the neighbors have a convenience store instead of a small business.
Right.
That's the piece that, that we're trying to shave off.
And that's why I, as a zoning administrator, pass that off to you.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, if it, if it was, Leland, if it was out in a business area, it wouldn't be the big concern as being in the residential area.
Right.
That that's a concern. Did you have a question for Justin?
Yeah, I think we're gonna have Justin English weigh in as the city attorney for having them reapply as a conditional, with a conditional zoning request, MXD.
I think that's the, I think that's the ideal solution here, that they, they reapply and submit the request for conditions. And then, I, I just want to make sure it's clear to the, the commission, if the applicant reapplies, submits their proposed conditions, and that's presented to the commission and ultimately to the, to the council, both, that can be rejected. It doesn't have to be accepted. And so that's kind of where, where, as it was stated, the back, behind the scenes, back and forth goes on to try to figure out what really needs to be in that, that agreement that gets submitted to the commission. Even if it gets submitted to the commission and, and everyone thought that, that's exactly what everyone wanted, and it's not, you can still reject it. So I want to make sure that's clear.
Ultimately, still an act. Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'd like to clarify that during this process, there will not be business conducted out of that building until we get all these details worked out. Is that correct?
That, that should be correct. We submitted a, a letter to Mr. Thomas, and once they received the letter, Mr. Thomas himself contacted me and, and talked with me, as well as his attorney, left a message at our office indicating they were not conducting business any longer there. They got a letter, they knew they weren't allowed to, and, you know, I, and I know, again, I think there's been some discussion about how personalities don't matter, but to some extent, I think you guys know they do, because we've dealt with the mosers. I don't get the moser impression from them that I, you know, that we got from the mosers.
Well, yes. I'm not trying to deny you business, I just don't want to be in the, in the position of having you write another letter saying, oh, by the way, we expect that you will not be conducting business in the interim.
Yeah, I understood that, in talking with them, that they weren't going to be, and then obviously told them if I heard otherwise, it was gonna be another issue.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I have a comment.
Yes.
One thing, as someone who lives across from a business, and a dumpster comes in every Monday and Thursday between 5:00 and 6:00 a.m. and wakes us up, it's disturbing, okay? And it's gonna keep going on because the city never provided anything, any way to help us and other inconveniences. If this is to go, was to go forward just like this, we had to vote straight mixed use, even though I'm in favor of you being there, I would have to vote no.
Without conditions.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I have the same issue living next to the school. They come and empty the dumpsters at 4:45 in the morning. Yeah, great.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, so I think I missed possibly something that the city attorney had said, is that right? Could you, could anybody tell me what that is or summarize that?
He said the ideal would be to reapply.
And he said that you had contacted him right after the letter.
Oh, okay, so it's that, it's that same gentleman, it's like...
Yes, yeah.
And, I'm sorry, not everyone has the tags, and you two ladies have been nice enough to offer essentially some direct input on how you're feeling, and I wonder, without going to approval or a vote, if any of you gentlemen would like to offer any of your thoughts similar to that.
I'll gladly, I'll gladly comment. I would agree with the ladies that if it were mixed use, because of some of the concerns that Genevieve had mentioned of, but if Mr. Thomas were to sell, and it wasn't just selling his business and continuing on, but a convenience store or a number of other things could go in there, I would deny it as mixed use. I'm personally very in favor of, because of all the positive comments made, of working out an arrangement that would allow his business to restart basically on a conditional zoning package, if you will.
And to go along with what Larry said, when I came in here, I was against the mixed use until we found out about the conditional rezoning use. And that's what the attorney just finished telling us, is that he would suggest that that be the way that you should go. Because you two should get together, you and, and the city attorney, and work out what, you know, you've heard our comments here and what the public has brought out, and just come up with an agreement and resubmit it as a conditional... Carmen, you said conditional rezoning?
Yes.
Okay. And, and in that case, I'd be for it. Dick, your turn.
Okay. Pardon me?
I was talking.
Justin's probably waiting for me to make my comment. I, I can't, I can't agree with moving it to a mixed use district. I just think that the recommendation that Carmen has brought to the attention of the commission is correct, and I think we're going the wrong direction if we approve a mixed use district.
Mixed use with, with conditional rezoning or just mixed use?
Just mixed use.
Okay.
And I think that's what we're here to do tonight. The letter says in public hearing, proposed new zoning is mixed use. That's, that's what the public hearing is all about. You know what? Doesn't make any other, doesn't say anything about conditional or anything.
Right.
That's what we're up here to do.
Well, we just learned that tonight.
I realize that, but that's what the reason of the public hearing is.
Right.
My point is, is we should consider, there's an option, and I think we need to look into the option for Justin. I'm not saying we want Justin.
Now, it's up to you as to whether you want to continue with the mixed use or whether you would like to withdraw it and go back to the conditional rezoning.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that I need to make that decision at this moment. I wonder if we could table this application so that I could then contact city council and work on possibly a conditional rezoning application while also possibly at the same time formally withdrawing this application.
Well, city council can't help you.
No, I, I mean city attorney, that council.
City attorney, yeah. So, so we just want to table this for this evening while you guys sort out some stuff, and then you'll let us know what happens.
I think that's a good idea in case we ever come back to it or feel like we need to come back to it. We're not asking you to take action on it, we're asking you to table it, and my suspicion is that prior to it arising again, you'll hear from the city attorney on what direction that would take. Does that sound okay?
It does.
You'd have to reapply, wouldn't you?
We would have to, we would have to file a new application.
Right.
If, if that's what we do, we would have to file a conditional rezoning application, is my understanding.
And what's, what's the timetable on that, do you know?
Well, I think we would have to file the application. I think there, that, that once it's, once it's essentially agreed upon, there has to be for sure a meeting and a public notice as a requirement as well. This is, is at least this consultant's understanding, and I will say that I, I am quite certain that he has been through that process more than I have.
Well, should we consider to put it on next month's meeting? Or do we want to see if we can get it in sooner if we need to?
Call the special meeting.
We've got the option to call a special meeting.
We've got the option to call a special meeting.
That'd be, that'd be great. I mean, the reality is that my client is really suffering true hardship.
That's why we offered that.
Yeah, no, that would be fabulous, and I assure you that tomorrow I'll contact the city attorney to proceed with this as quickly as possible.
He's in Florida.
Wow.
Phone work, the phone works down there.
Okay.
Well, I don't know what the timetable is, once you come up to your agreement for submitting the paperwork before we can, you know, I know that there was, what, 14 days? Something about 14 days, and we just, we did that with a special meeting. Call a special meeting.
We can call a special meeting quickly. It's a matter of, I don't recall right now how many days we have to announce a...
It was 21, remember, or 30 or something, and we just dropped it down to what the city council had.
Right.
So we think it's 14 days for that, Mr. Chairman? Yeah, the state law, the state law says 14 days to ask to publish then the, the paper of general circulation.
Okay, so if they got something together in a week, then we've got 14 days before we can have our special meeting.
Mr. Chairman, it's most important that you get the, the conditions right, because you don't want to go through this more than once because then you lose a month or whatever. So the most important thing, the conditions right, and my recommendation is if any of you have thoughts about the property, either if that's not with the attorney or to us, because we'll probably be talking to the attorney, and so you can't, because you can't do it at the meeting. It's meant to get them in advance, let, let, let everyone know what those concerns are. Same thing if the council members have any concerns, if their residents have expressed any concerns. All these are things that you can address in the, in the agreement beforehand and come up with something that, that both sides are comfortable with.
Makes sense.
Hey, and I, I wonder, do you, do you see that handled most often in a special meeting or a month?
It can be, there are. It's, yeah, there's no legal, the state law isn't saying.
You know, another option that we have is we could, if they're ready, have a special meeting and review, it doesn't mean that we have to have the public hearing in advance of that special meeting. We just can't move forward correct until, we've had the public, public hearing.
Do that also.
So that's another option, if expediency, you know, if that were to help.
Mr. Counsel.
So timeline, I guess, I'm just curious about the timeline.
Well, that's what, that's what I was trying to figure out, but...
Mr. Chairman, it, it's really, more often than not, it, it comes down to getting feedback if there are any issues to the applicant and the applicant putting something together quick. I mean, that's really what it comes down to. As quickly as everyone's willing to work, it can be, it can be done very fast.
And you, feedback, you mean from anyone on the city side through their attorney over to me so that we can prepare the documents?
Yes, like, if there's a desire to have, I'll track it coming off of Britton instead of off of Nixon, and yeah, I mean, that, that would be one of the conditions. So you want to make sure that, that if there, because what you don't want them to do is to come back to you with a list of conditions and define, oops, we missed something or whatever. I mean, you try to avoid that as much as possible, because that's what slows things down.
So if there's good dialogue initially, and the attorneys can...
Yeah.
Have good dialogue initially, then the rest will go very quickly. Yeah, of course.
Yeah, I think the city attorney would need to hear from you or anyone else within the city as to whether or not you would have proposed conditions and what those might be so that he and I could then work on the document and hopefully as, cover that as comprehensively and with, with some hope of finality as soon as, you know, maybe, maybe, maybe 30 days from now, including the notice to the public if possible.
Well, everybody that's here, if you have any comments, get them to me and/or Devin.
I think it's probably then that Dick Lewis has got the concern.
Well, he's gone, so we can't ask him.
No, if, this would be input that would get to Justin English on what we want for the conditional rezoning, like parking only on the north side, no pole lighting, flat sign on the building, you know, like things like that that we would want to see.
Coming out of this.
Right. So he would need to submit what he, what he would like to see.
Make sure he knows.
Okay.
Watch court there, babe.
I have, I have one more question.
Yes.
And first off, I respect you guys a lot for what you guys do, so thank you guys. I, I do have a question. If, if the conditions are good, from our side, from your side, can this, can this go through?
Well, you just heard everybody's answer.
Yeah.
And as, as a mixed use, no, it's not gonna go through.
That's, I'm, I'm, I'm clear on that for sure.
As a conditional rezoning, everybody was, was in favor of that.
Yeah. Because I think that hopefully by you guys talking to me, that you guys understand that I, I am flexible and I'm willing to work with you guys. I just want to know that what I'm gonna go through in the timeline I'm going through is gonna pay off, and we'll be able to work there, you know, because I do have a lot of people at work for me, and I'm responsible for a lot of things, and it's very tough not being able to go to my office every day. So as long as I can, you know, feel comfortable that we can come to an agreement, I'd love to move on with you guys, for sure.
Well...
Kelly's got a problem. Go ahead, Kelly.
I'd just like to point out that our attorney cautioned us that we can't give away our responsibility, that at any point, we need to look at all of the issues that are brought forward. And I, I'm looking for exactly what he said here, but basically, that we, we retain the obligation to make a decision when we get to that point. That's not something we can commit to in a vacuum.
Yes. Yes, so what Kelly is relating is that, that she, she, you've gotten our opinions here, but that can't constitute a legal promise.
For sure.
Right.
For sure.
Is that correct, Kelly? Am I summarizing that right?
That's correct.
I totally understand.
Yeah, yes. You've, you've heard our comments, you know kind of where we stand now, but, you know, we can't hand you a piece of paper today that this, this is going to be good.
Yeah, I totally understand what you have.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
So we need a motion to table?
Any other comments?
I'm sorry.
Before, before we do that, Dick, any comments that you have, send to Devin and/or me. We gotta have a central clearing point, so that, you know, any comments to have, and then I'll get them to Justin, because we can't put in, as, as Carmen said, we can't do it.
Okay.
Huh?
We can.
Yes.
That's right. Okay.
So...
Interaction on the rezoning, parcel on Madison Street until...
Okay.
For the notice.
Sanford seconds? Okay. I need to do a roll call. Sanford?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Aki?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Petrelli is a yes, so that's unanimous. Okay, motion to table here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing is closed.
Public hearing is closed. At 8:29.
Chair.
Bob, I'm not, I'm not finished with the I-1 and I-2, so I only have about two-thirds done.
All right, well, we'll just bypass that.
Yeah, we've got DDA discussion.
Okay. Well, we need to, well, we'll just, the three other DDA will figure out.
Okay, so we, so we're gonna table the rest of them?
I did, my daughter. I'm still here. I'm good, staying out of trouble and everything.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion that for old business, that we, we table the business until the next meeting?
Leaving the DDA, we'll talk about DDA.
Oh, we are gonna talk about DDA? Oh, now, okay.
But you can do the other three.
Yes.
I gotta check and see if I can still hold on.
We need to talk about the DDA tonight.
We need to talk about the DDA. Okay. So we need to get back to the, we, we need to finish this meeting. So we need to get back to the, oh, we got, we need to finish this meeting. We still got it done, that's okay. We still got more honor to do, so we need to finish. Thanks.
Well, Dick, you might be here till 10 o'clock?
Yeah.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Hey, we've been here, we've been here, we've been in this thing.
Yes. So Chairman Adke for DDA discussion?
Uh, we, I'd like to do a. Well, I'd like to make a motion that we table indefinitely the Parks and Recreation discussion. Be scheduled and I want an I-2 zoning ordinance.
A second.
Uh, roll call.
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yeah.
Petrelli, yes? Wilson? And wait on Sanford.
We're going to talk about DDA now, so if you could just hang on just a little bit here.
Yeah, I know a lot of DDA work. So if you got something you need early in the year, you might as well, you can even probably.
The Justin English sent a letter, which I don't know if you, you all got it or not, but he sent a letter that said that the DDA should just be in the downtown area. And, uh, Sue Hammond, the mayor, asked me to ask planning commission whether we wanted to continue to pursue the DDA or whether we want to stop going on the DDA and drop it completely. Now, I will make a comment, and everybody knows that I'm for DDA. And I will make a comment that we are either the smartest town in Chiawassee County or the dumbest town. Because everybody else has DDA, and so we're either smart or dumb. And it's up to us to decide whether we are going to pursue it, to go on. Of course, city council has a final say anyway, so, uh, but what, we have a proposal from CIB. Uh, and what their proposal is, it's a two-part proposal. And the one part, they will come in and analyze, and now since the down, since the area has been reduced considerably, his quote was based on the four corners and downtown and the baked area that we had before. And he will come in and for a fee, uh, analyze what money is being taken out of the city to go to DDA and tell us exactly what it is. And, uh, the money that would go to the DDA does not necessarily 100% of it come out of the city budget. It also comes from the funds that are leaving Perry to go to other municipalities that, that take money from us. We would get that money back. So it, it isn't everything, you know, if he comes up and says we're going to get $1,500 a year, uh, in the DDA budget, that does not mean that $1,500 a year is coming out of Perry. It just means that we're getting it from, some from Perry and some from the other locations.
Assuming that they support it.
Correct, but they support everybody else. So, you know, they're looking for the business to grow and they will benefit. And with the number of houses that are being built around Perry right now, legal will tell you, there's a bunch of them. I think there's about 12 or 14 in my area and one right next door to me, so, you know, they're, they're going up all over. Do, any comments or questions?
Chairman, I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry, Kelly, go ahead.
Um, from work that we did before on the DDA, um, row engineering made it very clear that a DDA with just two blocks of downtown is extremely difficult to justify. At that time, we were looking at both the now, north end of town and the south end of town connected zigzagging across M-52, so we limited the number of residential properties within it. So that would just be my thought. I, I guess I'm questioning that it makes sense for just two blocks of downtown when we know the growth will be on the north and the south ends.
You might hear what Kelly said.
Um, Kelly stated that she had questions initially when the DDA was discussed for Perry, that it includes the north end and the four corners as well as Main Street right now, and perhaps the south end of town. And she's wondering why those areas are not included anymore? Um, and is it worth it just to have a DDA for the two small blocks here on Main Street? Is that correct, Kelly?
Yes, I would just add that the purpose is to capture growth, and we know the growth will be in the north and south ends of town.
Okay, she said the purpose is to capture growth and, and she believes that the growth will be on the north and the south of the town. And that was essentially my question, Chairman, was the, how the decision was made to split off the north end? Like what, what prompted that?
Well, when we did this before, we had, we had from the south end of town going up, and we went right up the center of 52. And now they say that you can't use a road to connect two areas. Is that correct?
No.
I mean, you convert a few properties and fix that.
Yeah, okay. And it, it came up that the discussion was what can we do to help the north end of the four corners? What can we do to help them as a DDA?
Kelly has a question for you.
Bob, I thought we were zigzagging.
Wait a minute, Kelly. Go ahead.
I thought we were zigzagging back and forth across M-52 to pick up properties that are already commercial, that we weren't using the road.
Yes, that is correct. We, we were going up, but that's, but that's what they said, is that you can't use the road to go up there.
Well, but we would be, we can't cross the road?
Yes, we can.
Well, that's what we were doing.
Yes. But if you look at the one that, that somebody got ahold of, we just went straight up 52 and then zigged out for, like, carols.
Oh, no, we were crossing M-52 regularly. We wanted to pick up the consumer substation. We wanted to pick up all of those, those areas that are commercial, not just carols.
Correct, you know, we can do that as long as we just don't use the road as a boundary.
Right, we don't have to.
No.
I thought we had figured that out.
Yes.
Okay.
The other clear, right piece of distinction was also the fact that the four corners was not showing deterioration in value, and therefore it was on the other criteria, as I understand it, was required to be, meet the DDA requirements of the state. And only the downtown central business district would qualify under that.
Well, it, it states that it should be curating area within the district. So you could have it here and not up there, correct?
Yes, correct.
There, there's so many different ways to look at that. Um, I would not let that be a, a confining factor. What, what I would recommend is first get over, you know, the concept of what we're trying to do here. And, um, because you do, as you, you can capture the taxes from all the other taxing jurisdictions. And remember, you're not taking anything away that's currently going into the city. It would only be anything, any new improvements and new increment. The other thing that you can do that we write into DDA plans is your ability to help, if you've got a project, to try and incentivize. Uh, what you can do is you can use future tax increment from that project and commit it to that project um, to help close any gaps there might be in finance. So if you don't get the project, you're not going to get that money anyway. Okay, so what you're just doing is saying, we'll give you an incentive to do that project and we'll forego collecting that tax increment for five years or 10 years or whatever. But when it's all done, we get all that new tax increment from that project that you wouldn't have otherwise. So it's a really useful tool, and it, it kind of puts you in the same league as other bigger communities. Because then you have a tool that will help you compete with that. Because you're competing against other communities for dollars, and where that's what we're all doing. Um, so we're using that in, in a lot of different places. Uh, I don't know if you're familiar with that Meridian Township with the, um, uh, what's it called? I'm beginning to forget the name of it. The big mixed-use project they're doing for the.
Oh, at Alchemist, at Hamilton?
Yeah, the, the, yes. We were involved in that, and, um, and that's what we did, we set them up to capture tax increment from it to commit that to the project, because they had so much environmental contamination, they didn't have enough money to clean it up. So we were smack dab in the know of that, and we updated their DDA plan and helped them put that in place. Um, really, when you look at what a DDA can do, it's kind of a no, that, I hate to say it's a no-brainer, because it's tax increment financing is one of the most misunderstood things that you can find out there. Most people don't understand how it works, and it's, which is, which is, which is reasonable. It's not always easy to understand, but it's one of the most powerful tools that local communities have, especially since we're not going to be seeing much money from the state for development projects for a while.
Maybe.
Our attorney's advice was that the only area that was appropriate for DDA was their downtown district. It cannot be out at the four corners because their property isn't a 4.5.
Oh, it's not.
Wait, wait.
Well, just, just the extent of it.
Yeah, you could do an inner, you could do an inner governmental agreement for that.
Well, he didn't advise it. And how many of the DDAs in our state are that successful? I keep hearing DDAs are fully.
They are what?
I won't disagree with you.
Mindy is saying that DDAs are, could possibly be fully, sorry, just relating this to the folks on.
Um, like, Mr. Chairman, most, most DDAs, not all, most DDAs don't realize their full potential. They're worried, they're more worried about, you know, are we, are we exactly complying with the state law? When there's a lot of gray area. Or are we doing?
Not a lot of that.
Or the, or the things that are, that you can do that, um, are a little more flexible with it. And I, there's attorneys that are written on that.
Well, I think that's how we end up, um, cheating.
No, no, what it is.
I feel like it's cheating.
No, it isn't. What it is, is that here's the state law, and it's how are you interpreting what is written? It's not, it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't absolutely clarify everything, so.
No, it does not.
We rely on attorney opinions, and there was an article written in like in 2008 by Igor Vasat, Miller Campbell, who I've worked with in the past, and, and it very clearly tells you what public benefit is. And it's a lot more expansive than a number of attorneys may tell, other terms. Okay, so they don't always agree. So I'm just saying that there's a lot of gray area in there, and the communities with DDAs that are successful are the ones who are willing to, um, you know, it's, their interpretation of the state law is a little more, um, flexible than maybe some other DDAs, and the ones that are, um, doing well. And frankly, I've never heard of a DDA getting sued over that, ever.
And if the DDA does fail, the money reverts to the city anyway.
Right. Right.
So. In, in the county, um, but one of the ones I've worked with for a long time is the City of Fack, and I live there. If you look at downtown, um, you don't really have to say anymore. Yeah, it's, it's very successful.
But I, I also feel that a great deal of the success is based on the people that are involved in it. And that was another concern for us, is we have not seen any, anyone from the business and want to be involved.
Well, Mindy?
There, no one. Oh, Kelly's got a question for you.
Hi, Kelly.
Hi, Mindy. I'd just like to point out that after, um, our group was kind of shut down, the business people we had who were interested, um, were pretty demoralized. And there is so much misinformation out there, like, uh, some of the numbers were it was going to take 50,000 in the first year out of the city budget and all of those things. I almost feel like we need to wipe this slate clean and, and try to get accurate information out. And I think you will be surprised at the interest we will get from the business community.
Well, that's what city council has been doing, is trying to get the facts. And that's why we ended up going to our attorney, because we had so many questions. There's been so many Attorney General rulings on it and like that, that CBI didn't seem to be aware of. So we went to our attorney for the facts, which makes me again hesitant.
Well, you know.
Pay somebody $18,000 to put it together for us and.
How much?
Yeah.
How much?
$18,000.
That was for the big area.
Have we determined that it would be different with a smaller area?
Um.
You know?
It would. I think the point of discussion we need to narrow on is if we have a DDA with the central business downtown, it's the only thing that our, Mindy said, that's the only thing that our city attorney is willing to support from a legal perspective. And I can read the letter that sent to Sue Hammond, that basically does state, state that it would be the central downtown district, and if we're going to have a DDA, that it needs to be based on do we feel we support moving forward with the DDA for the central downtown district only? I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, that the, I don't think the city council at this point in time, based on the input of Justin English, has any affectation, any more discussion on the four corners or other particular parts of the city.
And a lot of other.
Part of the DDA.
But, and then one more thing. If planning position is in favor of moving ahead with it, we're going to put together a meeting inviting the business people to find out from them, do you want to do this? Are you willing to work through this? Cause we, we haven't seen.
I think that's my biggest concern about it right now, um, having read through what city council's put out in here, is that, um, beside Chairman Adke, and Kelly, of course, is interested, is that, that to have this united front, this spearheaded front that is very, very motivated to wade through the paperwork and the legal commissions and everything right now, and someone who can dedicate a lot of time to continue to shepherd it, not just in its birth, but through the years as it goes. I think that's, to me, right now, the piece that I said, we can go ahead, but who's going to continue to shepherd this through and make sure we get our money squared out of this?
I think that's a piece of it. Going to be the other piece of it, given that it would only encompass the central downtown, uh, I'm concerned that we've set up a divisive situation between the central downtown and the rest of the businesses within the city. That if in fact we went forward with it and it did generate some rents or some money, it's only funds that would be used downtown, what about all the other businesses that didn't have to fit in that mold? And to your point, I had some conversation with other localities, and it really is not only the DDA and all of the legal, you know, paperwork that goes with it, it is having the firecrackers and the people that are able to drive it make it happen.
So the, so the way that it's drawn now, does it include like plum bobs and tannins and all those?
No, it's, uh.
So, and carols?
No.
No.
Okay, let me, let me just, uh, this is from Justin English, the, to Sue Hammond, February 17th. This communication is to supplement the previous letter dated February 2nd, 2021, from my office. Our office received the requested information concerning the proposed DDA from the assessor of building inspector. Upon review of this information, it appears as though the analysis provided by Mr. Bridges previously holds true, referencing years past. The only portion of the proposed district likely to be acceptable as a DDA would be Main Street from Poly Street on the north end to Orchard Street on the south end, downtown portion.
Got it.
The proposed area must be a business district defined as an area of downtown. The proposed area must be a business district defined as an area of downtown, this town zone. And it goes on a little bit from there.
Okay.
Very definitive.
And if you make the law, it makes sense.
Okay, well then I'll make the motion, uh, as whether we should continue with it or whether we should forget it. And move on to another area. So we'll start with Kelly.
Well, Bob, uh, uh, I'm wondering if we can request a second opinion from someone, an attorney who's an expert in DDAs. I mean, I don't mean to disparage either Mr. Bridges or Mr. English, but this is a highly technical area. And we've heard from other attorneys who have told us other information. And to address Mindy's concern about not operating in gray areas, we wanna be sure that we have the best possible legal advice. Is that an option or not?
Well, city council would have to approve that, correct?
Yes.
She is, Kelly is saying that would it be possible for the city to get more legal opinion about a DDA? From a DDA specialist attorney or firm as opposed to just the city attorney, somebody who deals with that. So she's asking, she thinks it's possible.
Cause you seem to think that we could include the corner if special things were done.
Well, the statute talks about deterioration, but, um, deterioration and decline property does. Um, we had, there's one that I work in and we, um, we took an interpretation. If just because, you know, if a property value stagnant or it isn't increasing the way other properties are. That that could be considered a decline and, uh, or stagnation, which is so false, it still falls under that category.
Um, so you're thinking if we had agreements with other, like, what was it, a four twenty-five was the problem?
Four twenty.
Four twenty-five, we can get around that.
Yeah, you have to be able, in, in our local agreement to do something like that, which is giving it the DDA.
And they are not deteriorating in a, in a way.
No, but part of the rest of it is, if it was all.
Not down at the corner.
But if it only had to be in part of your DDA, it was deteriorating, not the whole thing. It doesn't have to all be deteriorating, right?
Yeah, there's, I mean.
Probably it's in the boundaries.
Well, okay, let me give you an example. Um, the reason that City of Fenton has all their money is because they ran their DDA out to US twenty-three and incorporated all of the new development and sort of like.
But not all of that's deteriorating.
Nobody ever, no, it was, it was undeveloped, nobody ever sued them over it. So they, they had, they were getting a million dollars a year off of that and that's how they helped redevelop that. So you know what, it, it, it certainly, um, it, it's a very specialized field. And, and there are, um, attorneys that, that do just that sort of thing, DDAs, um, you know, court of improvement stories.
Right, because like Kelly's saying. It seems like our attorneys take a very, very, very specific limited.
What about the attorney general?
And, and we're not, we're not familiar with attorney general opinions, so we're not attorneys. We're not attorneys, so we don't, but we do work with attorneys that do know that. Um, but you know what, I, I'm not gonna, I mean, when you deal with boundaries and stuff like that, that those are legal, those tend to be more the legal issues than the actual. DDA and the DDA plan itself, which is what we deal with. Um, but, um, you know, there, there are folks out there and we don't pretend to be interns either. So we, we do work with the terms of specializing.
Now, does your company also work with the city of Langsberg?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just did their, we updated their plan, okay? Uh, much, probably a community of much more similar size to Perry than the, the Fenton.
Uh, yeah, they're a little smaller.
But they're a little, actually a little smaller, but when you compare, you know, Perry to Fenton.
What's the population here, like five thousand something?
Twenty-one hundred in the, in the city itself.
Oh, okay.
The city itself, yeah, opposed to Fenton significantly, you know, larger. Langsberg is in the twelve to fourteen hundred.
Yeah.
Do you know where the Langsberg boundaries are for their DDA? Do they start all the way down at the corner where the store is?
I don't know that about that far.
Okay, just downtown?
Yeah, primarily downtown.
I believe they captured the majority of the businesses, probably not the grocery store out there. The point I'm getting to is can you characterize their, uh, merchant involvement with the DDA? As well as the, uh, other activity that's driving what appears to be their success? Whether it's DDA based or people based, I get the sense personally after some discussion with folks and some research.
Yeah.
A great deal of what Langsberg has seen has been back to Genovese comment. The, the people that are, you know, behind the scenes and making it happen. They've got a business association.
Yeah.
In addition to the DDA, they've got, uh, I think a, a different makeup of council people within the, within their city, I believe. You have any comments?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it certainly helps to have everybody on the same page. Um, and regardless of the size of the community, that's one thing Fenton's had for a long time, very consistent leadership. Everybody pulling in the same direction, not a lot of divisiveness, they all pull together. And the, that's, that's one comment that this community's had that they do really well. And DDAs, I know their chairman has been on board for many, many years. Um, and, and they have a pretty active DDA board, Langsberg does, they have a pretty, um, active DDA board. I mean, it doesn't mean that you have to commit a gazillion hours to it, but you have to remain active and involved and, um, you know, and, and, and work on projects together. So it's, you know, and, and you have to, every once in a while, you gotta put new people on because you want, you know, fresh ideas and, and new energy on there. Um, so it's, but you do have to have the business community, as you mentioned, you have to have the business community involved. And they, they have to, it has to be something that they, um, want to undertake, but it can really benefit them too. Uh, you can have a sign improvement program, you can finance improvements in the downtown that they otherwise couldn't. Um, because you don't have the money on hand right now. And there's a lot of different things that you can do. You can encourage new developments to come in to the downtown area. Um, everybody wants a quaint downtown now. So it's a really, it's a good tool, um, but yeah, if, if you're always, you know, and I'm a planner, I'm not an intern. But if you spend all your time being worried about being sued, then you're, you're just, you're not gonna go anywhere with it.
It's for the bold.
What's that?
Is it something for the bold, so to speak?
Yeah.
The communities that are bold are more successful in, in there.
The act is not one hundred percent clear on things and anybody who reads it, well, and I've read it inside and out a really time. There, there are certain things that are silent and where a home rule state, my interpretation is that the state doesn't tell you exactly what you can or can't do. You are free to adapt your own local laws to do that with consideration of attorney general's opinions in any court cases, definitely. Um, but you're free to do what, as long as there, it's silent, you can do it. So, um, within, within reason, but, um, the communities that seem to do really well are the ones who look at that and say. Hey, the statute doesn't say that I can't do it, so, and nothing else does, so that's something I'm gonna do.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you know what, I got hurt really bad with that exact thinking. My property was in a DDA. And they were gonna make me pay for a sewer that did not even go near my house. But because my property was in the DDA boundary. Yeah. They, they special assessed me.
Yeah, that's.
And I know everybody says, well, they shouldn't have done that, but you know what, because of the way the law is written.
Okay, let's.
They could do it.
Let's vote on this, so.
So what's the vote?
Okay, what's your, what's?
Okay, so this, do we wanna continue to pursue the DDA? Or do we wanna come, drop it and just forget about it and go about our business? So my vote is yes, we pursue it and Kelly says what?
Okay. So the, so the motion is, should the discussion continue on DDA?
Council wants to know if the planning commission.
Yes.
Wants to continue to pursue the DDA or forget it. Because if we forget it, then they're gonna forget it also.
And you're invited to the next council meeting to report.
I will go.
Okay.
What did Kelly say?
Okay, I, I have to have a concise, I had to have a concise motion, so.
All right, the motion is.
Will the planning commission continue discussion on the DDA?
Correct.
Uh, roll call, Sanford.
Come back in a minute.
Okay, Lambert?
No.
Lewis?
No.
Wilson?
Yes.
Archie?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna go yes, but I do not like the idea of two blocks.
And I will vote yes. Motion passes.
I, I couldn't hear what Carol's comment was.
She said, she says yes, but she doesn't like the idea of only two blocks. So again, we're voting on continuing the discussion, not in approving a DDA, correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay, just wanna make sure I've got that language correct, okay?
Okay, my, my comment was that to assume there's no interest by the business community, I think is inaccurate. Uh, the business community was pretty demoralized by the way it was treated the last time this issue came up. And as a member of the business community, I think it's important to keep our minds open. That if they see a real opportunity, this could happen, I think they will be on board.
Really noted.
All right, is there any others, any other comments we need to have?
I have a question and that is, as everybody voted, and I'm gonna ask, was it with the understanding that the DDA would encompass only the central downtown district?
No.
Well, that, that is gonna come up as we pursue it and go on from here. The thing that Sue Hammond asked is do we wanna pursue it from here on out? And it's gonna be up to council, it's gonna be the one that's gonna set the boundaries.
The attorneys set the boundaries and Sue's question was, does count, does planning commission still want to pursue it? Using those boundaries if it was a IR term?
That's not how this motion is. That's not just, that's just not what we voted on, that's not what we voted on. So you have to make a separate motion or we can table this. Until we're clear on what we want to vote on.
Well, what do we wanna do?
I wanna make a motion, I move that, uh, the planning commission. Ceases activity and discussion on the, uh, pursuing a DDA. With the understanding that the DDA boundaries would be the central business district only as previously described. From Polly Street on the north to Orchard Street on the south.
That's a motion.
That's a motion that says we would discontinue pursuit, any further pursuit with the criteria of being a DDA with those boundary restrictions.
Okay. Um. So the motion, planning commission will cease discussion of the DDA that only encompasses the central business district.
Correct, will cease discussion.
Will, will no longer support pursuing.
Okay. Just to make this motion here, okay, planning commission will no longer.
Support pursuing. The establishment of a DDA. Given that the DDA boundaries would only encompass the central business district.
And that's what it's at right now, that's what councils.
That's what the council position basically is, that is all just in English is. But we're really trying to bring to the forefront, I think, that says. Yep, the council wants to revisit the boundaries, you've got a planning commission position. Now, if the boundaries are in fact steadfast and set, what's planning commission's position?
So we're voting on, we're only considering that rule?
We're only considering that the DDA would move forward as a central business district only.
Let me read this. Planning commission will no longer support pursuing the discussion of the establishment of a DDA. With the boundaries that only include the central business district.
Correct.
Read that again. It sounds like you're saying yes and then no.
The planning commission will no longer support pursuing the establishment of a DDA. With boundaries that only include the central business district.
That was my motion.
Second.
I'll second that.
Oh, I think it's gonna second that, okay. Roll call votes, hang on, I gotta find another spot to put this. Wilson?
Yes.
Sanford?
Yes.
What was Kelly's?
She was a yes. Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Archie?
Yes.
Patrell, is a yes? Motion passes unanimously, way to go planning commission.
All right, any other comments, concerns? Mindy, what's in what we voted on?
I wanna know if you guys know.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna, we're not gonna consider a, a, a DDA. That only includes the central business district.
Okay, and everybody's.
I thought about that, yep.
My intent was if it's only the central business district, it's planning commission supported. If in fact there's a revisiting of the boundaries changing, then what I'm gathering is the planning commission would then consider or give it exploration.
So the, the DDA did that, right? Is that what I understand?
If, if in fact, unless we change the district, unless the, if the boundaries change. From central business district only to something broader. Then I heard the planning commission said we, the vote was that we continue to pursue it. If the boundaries are in fact going to remain central business district only, and that's a given to the commission. Then no, we're done, that's my interpretation of the two motions.
Okay, yes.
All right, any other business? Okay, meeting adjourned.